Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
No, we don't. Thank you. I want to welcome everyone to our October 7th meeting. Please note council's in full attendance. And I want to recognize we do have former Mayor Armstrong here. Raise your hand back there. I want to recognize you. And we have some people from 4H and especially our veterans sitting up front. It's good to see you guys. And y'all, you're welcome every Tuesday meeting we have. Always good to see y'all. Our first item on our agenda is items from council. And if council would let me, I usually don't go first, but I'd like to. I have a list of things, if I may. Particularly, I, with respect, I know the veterans are here and why. Dr. Reese has spoken to me a few times. And with respect to the parade fee, and I know that, I want to hear from you guys about that. Also, I understand this is the $25 fee to have the Veterans Day Parade on November 11th. I believe Mr. Alvarez has donated that fee. Is that true?
That's true.
And that's very commendable. We appreciate that. But regarding that fee, I would like to see if council's interested in maybe bringing the ordinance back to where we could exclude that day from that fee and waive it for Veterans Day only on November 11th every year. Is that an idea that y'all would, we could bring the ordinance back? It's been taken care of this year. Thank you, Mr. Alvarez, apparently. But perhaps we could get the ordinance back up here between now and next time and amend it. I think that would be a worthwhile thing.
Absolutely.
And I'm usually, you know, we try to treat everyone the same, you know, no matter what the cost, because we don't make judgment calls on charities and things like that. But in this case, I think that's something we could certainly consider. Of course, the barricades, that issue, we've dealt with in the past. There's no cost. There's a $250 deposit, and they can pick them up and use them. But I believe the county is taking care of that for them. So that's a welcome thing. I have a couple of other questions. Colby, Parks Department, you had a softball tournament this weekend, and was curious how that went. I heard good things, but I want to hear what you had to say.
It was a boys' baseball tournament. We had 25 teams, which is a very good start. We had 14 local teams playing. We had 11 teams from out of town. We passed out a little index card with a questionnaire on it, just asking how many hotel rooms they stayed, how many people, you know, came to town. And when they turned those cards back in, we gave them some baseballs for the weekend. We had, of the people that turned back in, everyone turned in. So we had an estimated 1,066 people come to the park. And their response was that we had 101 hotel rooms sold for that Saturday night. And so, a very good, successful tournament. It's a starting point. Look to see much larger things. We do have two tournaments coming up in November. November 1st, we are holding the Texas State Championships for Girls Fast Pitch. We've got 32 teams signed up for that as of this morning. And then we've got another baseball tournament on November the 15th, and we've got 28 teams already signed up for that one.
Very good. Actually, I was out of town yesterday, and someone brought it up. That some, I was at a conference, and someone there had been here for the tournament. And they were complimenting the fields and everything. And that's why I'd, I'd kind of, it skipped my mind, but I think it was worth mentioning that that was very successful.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Of course, Boot Fest, I should ask, I know we don't have numbers yet, but perhaps, how did that look, Mr. Garza D.?
It was wonderful.
I was there. I know the weather was perfect.
Wonderful. It actually went off, I won't say without a hitch, but it went off smoothly as a huge event like that can. We didn't have any major incidents at all during the event. We attracted a lot of people. We're still working on actually trying to guesstimate the number of folks that attended Boot Fest. The music acts were phenomenal. We had a lot of positive comments. You can check out the Facebook page for Boot Fest and see the kind of response the public had to it. It went about as well as we hoped for, and the weather was absolutely perfect. And probably less than three hours after the event ended, downtown Delion Plaza was clear and ready for early service masses on Sunday morning. So it went very well.
Yeah, I was there Saturday night, and when I came back Sunday morning, it was amazing, because it was pretty, there was a mess Saturday night, but y'all did a great job.
A few beer bottles around, yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Well, we look forward to those numbers when you get all that counted up.
It usually takes us about a month to wrap up all the finances on the event. We'll have it back for council hopefully in about a month.
Okay.
So do you have any estimates on attendance?
Well, what, Rick McBrier, who was the head of kind of our security team for that night, he's estimating well over 20,000 people for Saturday night and probably 10,000 to 12,000 for Friday night. What we haven't calculated is how many people were going through the kids area. Usually, it averages about 1,000 people per hour in that area, and then also the vendors' area and such. So they're using some of the photographs they've taken to try and plot and do the math on that. But certainly over 30,000 people over the two nights.
Okay. Wonderful, wonderful. Thank you. I can't wait to see the numbers. I'm kind of a numbers guy, you know, so. Couple other minor things I had on my list. I know that the television cable company has been making changes to some of their channel offerings, and I, since they do operate as a monopoly here in the city, I did ask our city attorney about that earlier today, made it clear that we don't have any control over that aspect of their offerings. I don't know if any of your constituents have called you, but we cannot impact that. As a matter of fact, I was informed, if, I had, maybe had forgotten, that we actually no longer have control over the franchise agreement. The state sets that. So those companies have negotiated to set that at a state level. So, is that all accurate?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. But I know citizens are frustrated by it. And the bottom line is, we really can't affect that, so. The other last thing I had, and I've had this several times, is the grass clippings with all the rain and everybody, all the grass is growing well, and people are mowing and blowing the clippings out into the street. Who, who do they call? Who does a citizen call if they see that? Because, and I wanted to, normally, I don't bring stuff like that up in open session like this, but I wanted you to respond so that people watching could see.
They can let code enforcement know, and call the code enforcement number. You can also report online a complaint unless the code enforcement officer visually observes. The action is just, our enforcement is basically an educational one of reminding the citizens to blow that grass back into the, onto their property.
Is, so don't call the police. Call code enforcement.
Call code enforcement.
What if they video it? I'm sorry.
Good question for your neighbor to your left there.
Because, I mean, everybody's got one of these nowadays, and if they see somebody doing it, and they video them, and then they give you the video.
The right answer at that point would be if that citizen is interested in filing a complaint directly with municipal court themselves, they can. They can bring a copy of that video, come down here to municipal court, next door to City Hall, and they can file that complaint directly, and the prosecutor will take it up and review the evidence.
Okay. Very good. Do you know that number for the code enforcement?
485-3330.
485-3330? Okay. Hopefully, everyone will just comply. And I understand y'all have worked with people and told them, just don't do it. But all that ends up in the drains and in the waterways and clogs things up eventually.
Right, right.
Okay. Thank you. That, I think, is everything I had on my list. We have a couple of items from council, our 4H proclamation. Do that one real quick, because we have some 4H folks here, if y'all want to come up.
This is a proclamation signed by Mayor Paul Palosik, and it reads in part, "Whereas the City of Victoria is proud to honor the 4H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service for 107 years of providing experience-based education to youngsters throughout the Lone Star State, and whereas its more than 535,000 urban, suburban, and rural members, ranging in age from 8 to 19, hail from diverse ethnic and socioeconomic backgrounds and truly represent a cross-section of the state, and whereas the program undoubtedly could not have achieved its success that it has today were it not for the servants, service of more than 32,000 volunteers who have given generously of their time, talents, energies, and resources to the youth of Texas. Now therefore, I, Paul Palosik, Mayor of the City of Victoria, do hereby proclaim October 5th through 11th, 2014, as National 4H Week."
Okay. Mr. Haggen has one item, the visitor's center. We can go ahead and go with that next.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. No, I just put it on there. I know that former Mayor Armstrong was going to speak tonight, and just in case myself or any of the other council members had a question, if you're going to put it on the agenda, kind of give us that latitude. Okay. That was it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Council, other items?
I have one. I've received a couple of calls about the traffic again since schools started up in Woodway. Continues to be speeding, and a cut-through path there on Chimney Rock. I know we've talked about it every year that schools start, but they even mentioned that one of the ladies that was before us at another meeting is going to move over one street because of the amount of traffic, and I think there was a near miss out there as well. They've also requested that the, I think they've hired a sheriff's deputy patrol over there as well. I'd still like to go back and see what we can do about, maybe we get agreement on the council to do some speed bumps. That's all I can come up with as far as a solution to slow it down. Can we post a different speed limit on that road as well?
Why don't we bring back what we, the studies we've done in the past, and just refresh y'all's memory on that? We could, because it's been studied, and so we can just bring that copy back. Let's, we'll do that.
Maybe it's the city manager.
Yeah, we'll just do that at the next meeting, Jeff.
Thank you.
Not problem.
I wanted to bring back the issue of the, now that we're going to be talking about the transit and the money we're going to give them, I know we already passed the Boot Fest, but, you know, we've got the Christmas Parade coming, and it's going to be like one-time events. It's not like all the time, so they can work on that route to come down here. They bring some of the elderly and some of the other people that don't have ways to come into them.
Sure. And I sent you that email last week telling you the cost. The item is on the agenda tonight, so if you'd like to pull that from the consent, we can talk about the special events if you want to. When I sent you the email, I wasn't remembering the item was on the agenda tonight.
Oh, D2?
Yeah.
You want to pull D2?
Okay, I'm going to pull D2 and D4.
Well, real quick, real quick question. Who provided the Shell service during Boot Fest?
Private.
Private?
Well, but CBB does.
We hire them.
We hire that.
Okay. It wasn't transit?
No, sir. No, sir.
And that's only for the entertainers and not necessarily for people coming to?
No, ma'am, we had-
Are you talking about the shuttle?
The shuttle. We had off-site parking at the Health Center and Riverside Park, and so they could park there and then ride the shuttle in, so.
Yeah, we can go over that again on D2. Anything else, council? If not, let's open Citizens Communications. I know we have some people that would like to come forward and speak, so now's the time. If you, please come forward and state your name and address for the record, and try to keep your comments to five minutes or less, out of respect for everyone else. Thank you.
My name is Peter Reese. I live at 6120 Country Club Drive. I'm here because I'm the chairman of the Victoria County Veterans Council this year. The mayor has taken the wind out of my sails already. I think he solved our problem. I came in front of you tonight to share a lot of good news and a little bit of bad news, but he's, if I understand, you're suggesting we revisit the charge for Veterans Day and Memorial Day?
I said Veterans Day, but we certainly could entertain the idea for Memorial Day as well. Well, when the ordinance comes back on our agenda, that's when we'll talk about it as a group. We could sure do that, yes, sir. If that, you think that's okay?
We would really appreciate it, yes.
Okay, sure.
Anyway, why, the good news I want to share to you tonight, first of all, who's the veteran council? There are 11 veteran organizations in town, which are recognized nationwide. We've been meeting as an organization since 1940s, and there are two delegates from each of the veterans groups who meet. And we, besides discussing veteran affairs, we plan the Memorial Day activities, the Veteran Day Parade and activities, veterans' funerals we participate in if we're asked to. We supply, we have about 15 to 25 veterans that turn out to honor the deceased. That includes people, our veterans with banners. We have a firing squad, a flag fold and presentation squad, and a fellow that plays tap. So it's quite, quite, quite an operation. We provide color guards. One big project we took on, it was a cemetery project. In 2001, we surveyed all the cemeteries in Victoria County and found 35 of them with veterans buried in them. We decided to provide flags for those 35 cemeteries, which we've been taking out ever since on Memorial Day and on Veterans Day. In that mix of 35, we found eight cemeteries that had been completely abandoned, and sometimes we wonder why, but we took on the cleaning of those cemeteries, which we accomplished in about two and a half years' time. One of those cemeteries happens to be owned by the city. We took on the responsibility of clearing that cemetery and maintaining it from 2001 until 2012. The city assumed that responsibility in 2013. But in the process of doing that, we got no reimbursement. We got, we used our own equipment and gasoline. The only thing we got from it was backache and bug bites. But I wish Gilbert, the mighty man was here. In the process from figures that Mr. Cochran gave us from Parks and Recreation, we saved the city $160,000 in cash for doing the work that we did. I think that's a significant amount of money. I hope you think so, too.
Yes, sir.
Anyway, the fellows that are here tonight are the ones that have worked on that project. There are about 30 of us that worked on the project. These are the tail ends of the fellows that worked on it. I think you have a list of all the people involved in your booklet today. And some are, some are deceased, but there was a very devout crew and did a really good job. We continue to do it at no charge. The, that's basically all I have to present. Any questions at all about what we've done?
If I may, I just, I want to thank you for this list. This is a very important, and I recognize a lot of names. I was privileged to know some of these people on the deceased side as well. Any particular properties that you guys work on that you might think are the city's at all, please let us know. We'll research those to make sure, because if they are, we'll add them on our schedule of maintenance. And, you know, I know that all of council would agree that with respect to the Pleasant Green Cemetery, we thank you for what you did and pointing that out, and we got that back under our fold, so. And I apologize, I can't write you a check to reimburse you though, but you know how that goes. But I know that that's not why you did that. Y'all did that out of the goodness of your heart, and that's very well respected.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In 18 seconds, a small amount of not-so-good news was to discuss with you about the tax you imposed on the Memorial Day program and on the Veterans Day program, but I'll resent, I'll erase that from my comments till we hear back from you. We have a lot of voting veterans, by the way, in the county.
Understood. Thank you very much. Okay, Citizens Communication is still open? Name and address for the record.
Honorable Mayor, council members, my name is Kenneth Schusterite. I live in Victoria County, and I have business interests in the City of Victoria. I'm here today to call your attention to the condition of the Guadalupe River and the criminal nonfeasance under the Texas Penal Code of GBRA for allowing continual, continued total blockage by log jams. I've been before this council twice before to warn of the continued construction of impermeable ground cover in the watershed of the Guadalupe and Blanco rivers, and the runoff danger to all of us in the lower basin when, not if, the next flood occurs. The responsibility to maintain and steward the resource, quoting the general manager of GBRA. Additionally, under Texas Administrative Code Title 30, Part 1, Chapter 299, Subchapter E, Rule 299.61 pursuant to the provisions of the Texas Water Code 12.052, emergency orders may be issued without notice to the owner of a dam to make, to take immediate and appropriate action to remedy situations posing a threat to human life, health, and/or property, May 13, 1986, 11 Texas Regulation 1978. It is my belief that GBRA is and has been for years committing the act of criminal nonfeasance in its intentional backup of water on private property and putting the people who live in the floodplain in danger. You are all aware that prior to the flood of 1998, the river was completely plugged with logs. You are also aware that GBRA general manager was given front-page space in the local paper to say, and I quote here, "The log jams didn't make the flood worse. The water just flowed over the top," unquote. Absurdity and criminal nonfeasance at its very worst. As I did with Commissioner's Court and being aware of GBRA's long record of failure to steward the resource, I ask that this honorable council call upon the state's Attorney General -- hold on to your seats -- to indict both GBRA's general manager and its entire board for criminal nonfeasance. By the way, as Mr. Gush is aware, Black's Law Dictionary, it's right by my Bible, I live by it. That's what, this is, these are the definitions of our penal code, our system of justice. It comes right down to, are the lives and property of the people who live south of Water Street, or actually Convent Street, worth anything? It is long past time, long past time, to act on this matter. Even the Code of Hammurabi, which predates the Ten Commandments, calls for people who own dams, who steward the resource, to actually do their jobs. I guess the larger question here is, why must I stand here and ask for something that should have been acted on years ago? Perhaps if Country Club were located south of Convent Street, this problem would have been resolved years ago. I hold in my hand a letter from the Committee for Victoria's Future, the movers and shakers of Victoria, calling for the creation of a water conservation district, which I eventually helped form. There are people on this letter, in this room tonight, and yet, no one has stood up and said the obvious, it's time to act, people. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schusterite. Citizens Communication is open? May I should close it real quick? No. That was, that was a little joke.
Ron Raina, 703 Chaparral in Victoria. Just want to, I just got a few comments about Boot Fest. I attended. The event went rather well. Had to be one of the cleanest events I've ever seen in Victoria, no matter who put it on. Your solid waste crew did a heck of a job. For the most part, there was usually nothing on the ground except after the fireworks display, because everybody sat there and finished what they were doing and dropped it. But other than that, you know, I think that the city should use this blueprint and hand it off to other people who have events downtown, and hopefully, they can utilize the methods y'all used to keep that downtown area as spotless it was during the whole show. I think it went well. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Raina.
I'm Will Armstrong, and I live at 105 Creekside. I'm asking you, as a council, to appoint a study committee charged with the responsibility of exploring the feasibility of a standalone visitor's center in downtown Victoria. Cuero is the home of the Chisholm Trail Museum. Goliad is the site of the historical Labahia Mission, Goliad State Park, and the Fanon Battleground. In Calhoun County, the state will soon open a 17,000-acre nature park. Jackson County has Lake Texana State Park and a wonderful events center. We benefit from these assets. We have the hotels and restaurants for their visitors. A partial list of our assets that might interest a visitor in Victoria are the Victoria College Museum of the Coastal Bend, events at the Welder Center, the Navy Art Museum, the Art League's Gallery on South Bridge Street, Delion Plaza, the Victoria County Courthouse, a historical walking tour downtown and its old homes, Riverside Park, the zoo, three golf courses, a canoe trail, a $10 million ball complex, a skateboard park. We have the two largest olive orchards in the state of Texas, the Fine Arts Center where Victoria Symphony performs and other events take place. And, most important to many tourists, is our history. The ill-fated French settlement in Victoria County caused the Spanish to pay attention to what was later to become Texas. Many people want to visit a place where history took place. Linda and I went to Nacogdoches to visit with the city manager and the visitor's center director. They have a standalone visitor's center. The most important question that I asked their city manager was, if you had to start over again from scratch, would you have a standalone visitor's center? Mr. Jeffers, the manager, was quick to answer, yes, definitely, absolutely. Then he added, nothing takes the place of a greeting with a warm smile. We have local assets to show off, as do our neighboring counties. What we're missing is a place where people can drop in and see some videos about us and what our neighbors have to offer. A place that has some historical pictures on the wall, a place where you can buy maps and books about our history, a place where there's a restroom and a coffee pot, plus, most importantly, a friendly greeting with a warm smile. We need a standalone visitor's center in downtown Victoria. Downtown Victoria is still a work in progress. We invested in pavers, and it changed the way people think about downtown Victoria. Investing in a standalone visitor's center would make a bold statement to the world as to what we have to offer. I hope you'll honor this request.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Ladies and gentlemen, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm Helen Walker. I reside at 407 East San Antonio, and I am a downtowner. Most of you already know that I'm vitally interested in anything downtown because I think anything good that happens in the core of Victoria positively affects the entirety of the city and county of Victoria. I believe that when discussion of a freestanding visitor's center began, some of the council expressed that we might not have that visitor's center downtown right now, but that we should have it within three to five years. The plan that Mr. Armstrong has presented speaks to a planned 30-month timeframe to plan and execute that center. I support the effort. I have studied downtowns and Main Street programs for over 20 years, and I believe that downtown visitor's centers remain a positive and necessary feature of the most successful of those efforts. For years, I've taken my visitors to Cuero and Goliad, and with the things that are planned and beginning to happen in Victoria, soon I'll be able to keep them in Victoria and visit our places. I've always been a strong proponent of regionalism, and when I served as county judge, when we got several counties together to do things, people were so surprised at boards and commissions that we went to. And those were primarily very successful. And my answer to that always was, whenever, when something like that is so simple and so right, why shouldn't everybody do it? Will has already talked about some of the features in the counties surrounding us and the things that Victoria has. Bear in mind, one of the most important things in Texas history is Fort St. Louis. People, that was 150 years before the Alamo. Our sites in Victoria County, archaeological sites, are premier among the, the state of Texas and the nation. The artifacts on the long, along the Guadalupe River show that that was a travel path for indigenous people, from the artifacts found 1,000 years ago, and 700 years ago, and 300 years ago, and 150 years ago. Those, along with Goliad's, Cuero's, and other historic sites, make us a real center of what's happening in county surroundings. I wonder if, how many of you know that the Chisholm Trail Heritage Museum is home to the Tinker Collection? Before I served on that board, I never heard of the Tinker Collection. The Tinker Collection was, is owned and permanently under the auspices of the Chisholm Trail Heritage Museum. It is the premier collection of cowboy and western artifacts for North and South America. So 28 miles from us, we have a huge natural, resource for people who want. Heritage tourists spend more money, stay longer, and leave the cities they visit cleaner than other tourists. They bring knowledge, money spent on housing, food, and other forms, souvenirs, and we know the resources that we have bring those. During the Fort St. Louis Lab downtown Victoria some years ago, it was open for 14 months. Visitors from nearly every state and the Union, and 38 foreign countries came to Victoria, an estimated 150,000 people over that length of time. I urge this council to strongly consider the plan to study, and if that study shows what many of us believe it will, to fund and build a visitor's center. It would be a stellar accomplishment for Victoria. Thank you. Be happy to answer questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Gary Dunham. I live at 508 North Glass, and I prepared about a page worth of stuff to say, but I'd just like to say, Mayor Armstrong and Judge Walker have really told the story the right way. There is so much here that is important to the history of Texas especially. Our history should be a vital part of our future, and a fine standalone visitor's center is the place to showcase that and to educate the tourists who come to this town about it. I hope you will consider Mayor Armstrong's request and, and move on that. I think it's long overdue, and I've twisted the arms of most of you before about this, so this is just a follow-up to those meetings, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Blanche DeLeon, 236 Adcock Road, Victoria, and I've stood before this group many times, and usually it is about fostering and promoting the history of our city. Of course, I have a personal vested interest in that, and I have not only bent people's ears about it, but whatever waking moments I don't have, serving community as nurse, I'm out there trying to define it, explore it, expand it, and educate people on it. And I am too, very much for a freestanding visitor and convention bureau. And like the Armstrongs, I've recently been down in the valley. I visited McAllen and also Edinburgh, both of which have two fine visitor, convention and visitor, I think it's convention and visitor bureaus in their downtown area, greatly linked to their history, their architecture, and their culture. But the good news for us is, very interestingly, Edinburgh, I'm sorry, McAllen, told me that they are 100 years younger than Victoria. So we have something to say. And as I visited with administration and anyone who would listen to me, I know I've visited with Charmel and Will when he was mayor, I firmly believe then, and now even more, because I'm more educated and have spent more time with the issue, that our history is definitely up there, if not number one, something that Victoria can take to the bank. I have also come before this group asking for a home for a monument to honor our founder. I believe that a freestanding visitor and convention bureau can not only provide a beautiful home for that monument, but can also help tell the story. So it's not just a monument plopped down on a small piece of land where someone might have questions about, well, who's this and what's this about? The visitor and convention bureaus I've visited down in the valley, cities that are much younger than ours, have not only spent a lot of time in developing their history, but they also have collaborated, very fine collaborations with University of Texas, Pan Am, their convention centers, and more importantly, with each other, all the way down to Brownsville, where they have developed each one of their unique contributions to visitors and conventions so that they weren't overlapping programs, but actually expanding and giving people more to see in their area. And it's been a very, very successful program. I'd like you to consider Mr. Armstrong's proposal, and at least let the group go forward and do the feasibility study, and bring more rich information back to you about the possibility of this and what it can afford our community. I urge you to consider that seriously, and also am happy also to invite you, when I, I do, am going to be doing another tour on the 18th of October of Colonial Victoria and the downtown area, this time with Victoria College and their Center for Lifelong Learning. If you have interest in learning about Colonial Victoria, I'm going to email every single one of you with the little blip on what it's going to be about, when it's going to be. It's going to be on the 18th, along with 10 other things that are a fine city, and I hope that it might pique your interest to find out a little bit more about it. It certainly has become a lifelong passion of mine. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Sharon Steen, 508 North Glass, and you all have heard from me many times, but I just want to tell you a little story. Some of you I may have already told it to. This summer, about two months ago, I was helping put up an exhibit at the Nave, and because there was cars outside and the door was open, a young couple with a child about eight or 10 years old wandered in the door, and then when they realized that we weren't open, they started to leave, and we said, no, no, come in. And we started telling them about the exhibit, and they were so interested because the two artists were professors from the University of Texas at Arlington, where both of this couple had graduated, and they knew of them. And they, I said, how did you, how did you find them, or why did you come to the Nave Museum? And they said, well, when we decided, we've never been down this part of the country, so when we decided to come, we went online and saw you had an art museum, and we're very interested in art, and so that's what brought us here. And I said, well, did you go by our, the visitor's center? Because, you know, to get, and they said, no, we couldn't find your visitor's center. And I said, oh, well, there are some signs. She said, well, we finally went back online and got the address for the street. But anyway, that's one little story that we're not showing ourselves in the way that I, I think that we need to. Another thing that, that I think is interesting is when they talk about all the many things that we have to offer here, and we do, and they listed most of them today. But recently, I've been thinking and talking to other people in other places. We, as a city itself, our people, should start thinking about what else do we have that we could capitalize on? One of the greatest things we have are the ma, the big ranches all around our country. Some are small, some are big. A few years ago, I talked to one of the ranching owners, it's a good friend of mine, and I said, why don't you allow a busload of people to come out to the ranch and watch you work cattle? And he said, what are you talking about? I said, do you know they'd pay you very well to come out there? They would also, if you wanted to build a fire and cook a little meat or do something like that, they'd pay you very well to do it? I said, this is something. He said, you're crazy, nobody would do that. I said, I saw it work on a, a ranch up near Bandera, Dude Ranch, where one of this man's good friends owns and operates, and I said, he had busloads of Germans and Japanese coming all summer long to ride a few horses, to have a cookout. They're fascinating. Gary and I just were, returned from Scotland and London. Everywhere we went, every cab driver, everybody we talked to said, oh, you're from Texas? Do you have a ranch? What's it like? We want to see the cowboys. This is, and within this town, we have a lot of things that we could capitalize on that we're not doing. I hope you'll consider allowing some sort of, of committee to be put together to look at this. If it turns out it's wrong, okay, but we, we've done so much to bring this downtown and all that we have here to looking better, and I think the time is, is right. You've got to have a place where when you walk in the town, you get identifiable, and we don't have that right now. Thank you so much for what you're doing. You know I appreciate you, and I also would love to, you know, not many of you know, but this lady knows, and my close friends do, I'm part of the Martine DeLeon family too, so I'd love to see a bigger statue here. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I live at 307 Buena Vista. I was here on the 1st of April in support of a standalone visitor's center. I still am. But, in the meantime, my wife and I have visited visitor's centers in McKinney, in LaGrange, in Temple, in Nakadoches, in Natchitoches, Louisiana. And previously, I was involved with the Convention Visitor Bureau in Beaumont. But, when I say I support a standalone visitor's center, is having seen these things and having listened to the discussion that goes on here, I'm more convinced than ever that this needs to be considered as part of a plan. The plan needs to do analysis of what we're already doing. Obviously, you all are interested in those kind of statistics, as you heard from, on the athletic contest, and as you're waiting to hear from Boot Fest, and obviously, based on today's agenda, you're interested in planning. All I'm proposing is, what you've already heard, is we bring together some of the stakeholders in the community and look at a long-range, comprehensive plan, which I think would, in the end, conclude we need a visitor's center, but first thing first, plan first, and see what comes out of the planning process. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Ann Wagner, 408 West Goodwin. I also would like to speak out in favor of the concept of appointing a committee to look into the feasibility of a visitor's center. There is a national organization called Destination Marketing, Marketing, that has, that completed in January of 2014, a research study on visitor's centers, and I would be glad to give that information to, to the committee. It's very useful and informative.
Thank you.
Dolly Stokes, 307 Buena Vista. Contrary to some of your speakers who have been here many times, this is only my second time. My first time was in April when we talked about the visitor's center. My point then, and my continued point, without being duplicative, is the study has to be done, research has to be gathered. I'm a numbers gal, always have been. And at that April meeting, the mayor graciously said, allowed time for a citizens' group to, quote, gather information, do some research, and you've heard people did. But it became really clear pretty early on, just as we didn't want, I'll speak for myself, just as I would not want a study done just by city staff, or just by any governmental entity, it became clear a citizens' group shouldn't do it either. It's got to be joint, it's got to be collaborative. I speak from some experience in that, other than, some of you have worn many hats in your careers, I have, electric utility industry, economic development, but one of my first activities, I completed a master's degree in urban management, you know, city management, municipal management, and I worked for the city of Dallas. I also worked for the Environmental Protection Agency, and I've headed several nonprofit entities. And what I've learned over and over again is joint effort, consideration of other views, data, real numbers, data, more data, collaboration, sitting across the table with someone who's vested in the city, who works for the city, as well as the nonprofits who have a vested interest and have a deep wealth of knowledge, along with other people who've been here perhaps a much shorter period of time. Look at the electronics. When we travel, we always go online first. We always look and see what's there. But many times, when we get to a city, we find that restaurant that was touted isn't there anymore. So it's not just to have a standalone place for the cup of coffee and the greeting, because I think the center here, in the, in the city building, does that, when you walk in and they give you brochures, and they smile. But you can have the smile, along with the facility that has an audiovisual room to display part of Goliad, or part of the Chisholm Trail. Regionalism is one of the best tourism aspects that can be marketed from a central city like Victoria. And if we we do a study, a research effort, or plan, a master tourism plan, if it's done collaboratively, objectively, honestly, with data, research, numbers, points of view, and perspective, I think we'll all be much farther ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Citizens' communication is still open.
Good evening. Louise Patillo, I live at 802 West Power, and I'm always in favor of new things downtown. I love all those things that Will named. I sometimes forget how many great opportunities we have for people here. Today, when I went to the pump house for my lunchtime responsibilities, there was a tour bus sitting in our parking lot. And it was filled with individuals who had booked through a San Antonio tour group. She had taken them down to Corpus Christi, shown them the coast, taken them to the battleship, and she's found the pump house as a place that, on their way back, they can detour around and come bring them to a historic structure to have lunch. I think that those people would definitely be prospects to learn more about our area. They were all from all over the United States, retirees that are coming to Texas to see what they can find of interest down here. It's only one example that just happened to happen today. So I would be in favor of us pursuing this possibility. I know I've been here before to say, I'd like to move this on house onto a lot on Main Street. There are many, many possibilities. We do need public restrooms downtown that could also be incorporated into this if we could move it forward. The question that I would think that we might ask is, why do we need something in addition to what we have? We've got a big old building sitting right down there on Business 59 that says visitor information. But for some reason, people look at that as an office building, and they don't really see it as a welcome center or a visitor's center, is what I, at least what I envision. I know Pat McDonald, who owns the Days Gone By gift shop, said recently in one of our Main Street meetings that she has people stop into her gift shop all the time and say, you know, where's your visitor's center that we could go and get information and talk about what else there is to do in the area? So I was hoping she'd be here tonight to tell you the story herself, but I'm going to pass her story on in her absence. And thank you very much for your time, your consideration, and all the things that you have all helped us already do downtown. It's really coming along. We've made a lot of progress. Let's keep going. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for all you've done downtown, too. You've had a lot of hand in it.
Well, good evening, Mayor. City Council, I'm Randy Vivian. I'm president and CEO of the Victoria Chamber of Commerce. And I'm here to report to you that the Board of the Victoria Chamber of Commerce has voted in favor of supporting that the city of the Victoria City Council appoint a task force or committee to investigate the feasibility and necessity of a visitor's center building for the city of Victoria. And if a visitor's center building is deemed to be necessary, or a necessity and feasible by the task force or committee, the chamber would be in favor of having that task force or committee suggest the best possible locations for the center. And the results, obviously, be submitted to the council for y'all's consideration. We just believe that more eyes that look at it and able to just kind of investigate it, I think will be a better serve, not only for y'all, but for the citizens of Victoria. And we want to do that. Do you have a letter on that? I'll...
I think it was OC.
Okay, OC.
That'd be great.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Randy. Yeah, let's pass it out now while we're all here. Thank you. Citizens' communication is still open. Come on up.
James Worden, 507 South William. I don't really have anything new to share, but I do have a story. Since Louise shared a story, I can, too. I had a conversation with Charmel, and we were just talking about tourism in Victoria, and some of the assets we have downtown. And one of the things that came up was the churches that we have, the historic churches and the courthouse. So we kind of talked a little bit about Schulenburg. So I had occasion to go over to Schulenburg on Monday and just stopped by. And Schulenburg does have a standalone center. I think it may be run by the chamber, but they also do have a public restroom as well that's available, that's in downtown, but just separate from that building. And I asked him, you know, how do y'all do the painted churches? Because I've done the painted churches, and I don't know if y'all have or not, but if you know the painted churches, there's not one in Schulenburg, it's all in the surrounding area that you do that tour. Well, the chamber grabbed on to it, and they have printed a pamphlet that they sell, and they have coordinated with the churches in the area, not in Schulenburg itself. And they use that. And some of the proceeds, from what they told me, go to the churches. So I've done it on a weekend, and it's a great tour if you haven't seen it. But what I'm trying to say to y'all is, you know, we have all these assets in downtown Victoria that we do need to develop. We do need the Convention and Visitors Bureau to develop that product, in addition to the standalone visitor's center, which, you know, I think is really a no-brainer from what everybody has said. But I'm willing to look at it. You know, I wish we would do a little more investigation. Finally, I want to add, I know we're going to be spending, or we're going to vote on spending $175,000 on a comprehensive plan. And I hope that tourism and the development of tourism is part of that plan, because it can be a huge asset for Victoria. A lot of people have spoke about the ranches and other things that we have here, the churches, the courthouse. All those things are kind of just sitting there that we're not really capitalizing on. So just some more food for thought, and I hope y'all support looking further into doing a standalone visitor's center and putting this in the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Citizens' communication is still open? That's about everybody. Oh, one more. We are in no hurry. I'm not in a hurry. Come on up.
Are the cookies still up here?
Yes, where everybody can see them.
You said you'd let anybody speak?
Even you, sir.
Okay. Michael Hummel, 2306 North Wheeler. I'll not reiterate all the things that have been said. I just want to comment that I think we owe it to all of those who have come before us, those who have built what we have, to those assets that we do have, and to the people of our community, to, at the very least, establish a committee to investigate the possibility, the feasibility of a standalone visitor's center. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hummel. Always well spoken. Thank you very much. Citizens' communication still open? Seeing no one jump up, I'll go ahead and close Citizens' communication. And thank you all for sharing your thoughts with us. We're going to move into ordinances.
Could I express, before we go, under Item B, a couple of comments, Mayor?
Sure, sure. Go right ahead.
I'd like to remind Council, if you get an opportunity, go back to our current comprehensive plan, the 2025. It is a piece of unfinished business that that group did forecast or project in Section 9, or Chapter 9, as one of the goals, I believe, or objectives, was to accommodate our visitors and potentially look at a facility. So as we move forward, it would behoove us, I think, to transition that, some of that work into the new plan as we discuss it later.
Yeah, absolutely. I know, actually, we could talk about any of that under E1, I suppose, as well, if you would like. So we'll get to that in a few minutes. I think I understood what you're saying, though. Let's move to C1, ordinances without public hearings.
That is, Item C1 is an ordinance amending Chapter 24 of the Victoria City Code relating to fees, to amend the fee structure for parks and recreation, repealing conflicting parts of existing ordinances, providing for codification and savings, and declaring an effective date. This is a second and third reading.
Make a motion to accept Item C1.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion about this item? I have a little bit, but anybody else? I'm laughing because I'm still a bit confused by it. See Colby back there. He'll... I just want to make one thing clear. As I read it, I was a little confused. I'm more sharing this with Council at this point. It almost looks like we were going to add an additional fee for certain events. There was an example given for some of the run, 5K example. I've been assured that's not the case, but it read that way to me, which concerned me. Then, of course, I brought up some, I had some comments the last time we saw this about the language of it, and would like to maybe get an amendment to amend it very slightly, change of language. We can see how it goes, and we can always change it again next year. I kind of was hoping we could see things a little more itemized, but I think it's too much to worry about right now. I don't want to hold this ordinance up. But specifically, Council, if you'd look at on your handout, let's see, you have a special event area and a special event. Let's call that Riverside Special Event Areas, or area, I guess it would be singular.
On page three?
Yes, sir. If you go to C1, the next page, in the...
The ordinance?
In Section 2486, Special Event.
You wanted to make the change in the ordinance?
Yes, yes, yes. Absolutely. Not anywhere in the CM, not in the CM1, but in the ordinance, obviously. Riverside Special Event Area, so we would add the word Riverside. And then the word special in front of event. Do you want to, Charmel, I'll put you on the spot, because my confusion was, special event is really more about all other areas outside of the special event areas. Yes, I'm already getting myself confused again. You have set aside areas in the park that specifically say, I want that spot, and I'll pay $150 to have exclusive use to that.
Yes, sir.
So you've broadened that to include more areas, which is good. And then the actual event fee is anything else? That's kind of what that is? Is that a true statement?
Yes, sir. If you, currently, if you wanted to hold a 5K race at Community Center Park, we have no fees set for that. And so that's where the special event fee comes in. If it's any other event in the city, we can, we have the ability to have a fee associated with it.
Maybe I'm just making this harder than it needs to be, and I apologize if that's the case.
Well, Colby and I discussed it. I think if we add Riverside in front of that special event area, Riverside Park, that clarifies that particular line item is for those designated areas in Riverside Park.
And just leave special events as it is? Perhaps so, yeah. As long as the public's not confused, and, you know, we're not creating an additional fee, you're just... And I realize these fees are important, because these events have an impact on the facility that we need to maintain and recover. So it's... Okay, I'll tell you what, if someone will make, I can't make that, can I?
Sure you can.
I can make the amendment? I had to think about that for a minute. I'd like to amend it to just add the word Riverside in front of special event area.
Both in the definition as well as within the statement of the fee?
Just the one item. Just leave special event as it is. That's exactly what it is.
Right. In 24-86, special events, the definition of special event area would be changed to Riverside Special Event Area. And then below that, where it refers to the special event fee, we would also replace that with special event, excuse me, Riverside Special Event.
The one that says 250, is that right?
The one that is, the one that is not in bold that says special event area would be changed to Riverside Special Events Area.
Only where it says area, just add Riverside.
Right. So it's in two locations, we're adding the word Riverside.
Does that get confusing, though, if there is an event held in Riverside? So if the 5K is done in Riverside Park, are they going to get double taxed or double fee on that?
That's exactly what my concern is. No.
That's the distinction between being a specific area that is charged.
But it's a special event in a special...
No, you don't have to reserve the physical area. That's exactly what was my point. I thought we were going to double that fee, and I'm assured we're not, and that's not the intention, so.
Okay.
I think we're okay. I don't want to hold this up. We can always check, change it next year if there's confusion.
I just want to make sure that wasn't the intent of...
Okay.
Okay.
We can always come back. We don't have to wait a whole year if we see that it's created confusion. But when people come in to visit with the park staff about events, they'll go through all this with them individually.
Not a special area in Ethelie Tracy Park that falls under this?
Right. Because they're all under the park.
No.
All under the special event, any event, any other park besides Riverside would go under that event.
There's not just an area you can...
There's not a designated area. But we can work with somebody, though, if they want to do something. You can rent the pavilion in Ethelie Tracy Park.
Okay.
And then there's also a fee for the amphitheater. I've got to get my brain going on that. Is that the only two fees out there, I think, is the amphitheater and the pavilion? So...
We'll probably see this again, but that's okay. And I applaud you for trying to clear things up, because I know that's what you're doing and stuff. Let's see, I had made the motion to amend.
Second.
Okay, a second. So we're just adding that word.
Riverside.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
You already struck out of Riverside Park already in the special event in the body of that language, so why not unstrike it? You're just moving the sentence, says special events area of Riverside Park.
You'll have to show me exactly where we're at.
It's in Section 24-86, the special event in the body of the CM1. Not CM1, it's the actual.
It's the ordinance?
The ordinance.
H3?
H3 or 4 of the ordinance. You see how you struck out of Riverside Park? So you're just going to add it back in?
I'm looking. I'm trying to see.
Back in the middle of the page, or in the top?
Oh. So there's no need for change there, just up top?
No, this, the phrase of Riverside Park is struck in the current version that we're proposing. And what she's saying is, if we simply put it back the way it was, rather than using the word Riverside before special events area...
Why was it struck?
Well, we're not just talking about that little concrete pad in Riverside Park, which is what this has always referred to. That's where the maps that Kobe did that are attached to the ordinance that specifies special events. And what we were trying to do was to distinguish between the confusion of a special event, special event area, Riverside, and non-Riverside Parks, so other parks in the city, so...
You know, at this point, I'd like to just withdraw my motion to amend. Can I do that?
Yes.
I think this should be looked at later. I don't want to hold you up.
Okay.
I understand that when a citizen comes in, they're not going to read the ordinance. So they're not going to... If I'm saying the ordinance is confusing, you're going to explain to them, and it should be fine. But I have other thoughts about it. I think we should itemize this a bit more, personally. That's just me, though. I don't know that any of you would agree, but perhaps we should revisit it later.
The only thing about itemizing, you're going to forget something when you itemize, and then it's going to reduce our flexibility to work with a group that comes in to have an event, because we're not going to think of every little thing that a group's going to need, so...
I mean, I guess, relative to what we have now, it would be maybe better. But I understand what you're saying.
So if there's no objection from the Council, that amendment is withdrawn?
Yeah, let's just, okay, just leave it. I'm frustrated. I should have been on this a little earlier, but it's okay. It's not that big a deal. Council, do y'all have any other discussion on the item? Seeing none, all those in favor of C1, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you. Sorry about all that, Colby. Okay.
Item C2 is an ordinance authorizing the closure of the State and Street, Guadalupe Street, Sabine Street railroad crossings to public vehicular traffic, and authorizing the Director of Public Works to place such traffic control devices at said crossings as are appropriate to discourage public vehicular traffic in exchange for the consideration of an easement granted by the Union Pacific Railroad to the city of Victoria at the Ball Airport Road Extension, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for savings, and declaring an effective date. This is a first reading, so we will need a public hearing.
Let's open the public hearing on C2. Anyone who would like to speak on this item specifically, please come, so come forward now. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Council?
I just have one question. When we were talking about the closures, when you presented the different options, you said that if we went ahead with this option, we weren't going to have to worry about the count. Is that true? So we didn't have to do a traffic count?
Yeah, that's correct. Their current rules will, they've said they'll allow us to close these three.
Out for Ball Airport.
For Ball Airport. In the future, they're talking about having equivalent traffic counts, that's correct.
Right, so we don't have to worry about the equivalent traffic count? Right, so we don't have to worry about the equivalent traffic count right now?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I went following.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Make a motion to approve item C2 as presented.
Second.
Yeah, and I think I had made some comments regarding what I thought of that idea about closing a, but anyway, we won't revisit that.
Did anyone mention that included?
Yeah. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. C2 passes, thank you.
There are six items remaining on the consent agenda tonight, which will be taken up as a single vote. The first item is the approval of minutes of the special meetings on September ninth, twenty fourteen, and September eleven, twenty fourteen, and minutes of the regular meeting of September sixteenth, twenty fourteen. Item D3 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a community development block grant programmatic agreement with the Salvation Army, a Georgia corporation doing business as the Salvation Army unit at Victoria, Texas, for a public facilities improvement program in the amount of forty-six thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, and declaring an effective date. Item C5, excuse me, D5 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to purchase computers, computer software, computer peripheral equipment, maintenance contracts, security equipment, supplies, and phones through the Texas Department of Information Resources in the amount of six hundred and thirty-six thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars, and declaring an effective date. Item D6 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a real estate lease and professional services agreement with the South Texas Zoological Society Incorporated for management of the Texas Zoo in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and declaring an effective date. Item D7 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Goatscapers to provide brush clearing services at Riverside Park in the amount of forty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, and declaring an effective date. And item D8 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to purchase an MCC seventy-five hundred radio console from Motorola Solutions of Schaumburg, Illinois via HGAC contract RA five dash twelve in the amount of ninety-six thousand five hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty-three cents, and declaring an effective date.
Will we adopt?
Second.
We have a motion and second on our consent agenda items. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, D2.
D2 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an interlocal agreement with the Golden Crescent Regional Planning Commission for the operation of a transit system, and authorizing the expenditure of city funds for the transit system in the amount of two hundred and nine thousand dollars, declaring an effective date.
I move.
Second.
Motion and second. We have discussion.
Well, I just wanted to find out if the, the email that you sent me that said it was about twenty-four hundred dollars, was that per event?
Yes. It's, it was to extend their routes on Friday from six to ten PM if there was an event downtown.
Mm-hmm.
That was a little over two thousand dollars. And then if, to add the Saturday from seven to ten, and we could adjust the Saturday hours, but seven to ten, seven AM to ten PM, it was twenty-five hundred dollars, so that...
Oh, it was seven AM, not seven PM?
Seven AM, yeah. So it depends on if an event starts in the morning, we could, you know, we could adjust those hours, but that's the hour she came back and said if you do a seven to ten. So if you do a Friday evening and a Saturday event, that's approximately forty-five hundred dollars for them to run those routes.
On this, she was going to come present to us, I thought, this year.
She didn't during budget?
No.
Oh, I thought she talked sometime.
I thought she did.
Jeff.
I don't remember.
I didn't recall a request to have them coming for you, but was there a specific question you had?
There was a specific question that had come up at a previous meeting about the expanded route that was included in last year's budget and why it hadn't been implemented.
I believe that was supposed to be implemented, she told us that at the MPO meeting, September or October, should be getting close to be implemented, if it hasn't been yet.
It was going to be implemented last year, I thought.
It took them about a year.
That's why the budget increase was for last year to implement it last year, not this year, which would be October.
Was it three routes that she added? It was the one...
I think it was one new route and some changing of stops and anything, but that was supposed to happen last year, that's why we increased the budget last year. But it didn't happen, it doesn't sound like, and that's the question I have.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't personally know the details of that, but we can find the answer to that very easily for you.
Can you come back to our next meeting with an answer?
Sure.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. We'll even ask Lisa to come.
Yeah, I wouldn't hurt to have her come. Addresses.
Sure.
With the latest facts and figures and usage and whatnot.
Sure. Just give you, get her to come in and do a full report for you, so you can see the status of where they're at. Absolutely.
Any other comments on this? Did we get everyone's addressed?
Ms. Lisa, so you?
Oh, yes. Now, the only thing is if, if we were to, maybe we could compare the cost that you paid for the private party that does the transporting for the Boot Fest versus the cost of using them, you know, see whether it would be more convenient or, you know...
I thought we looked at that last year, and we determined that that's not appropriate to use the MPO or the mass transit for Boot Fest.
Oh, okay, okay.
My understanding was you, you wanted the routes extended into the evening hours when there's a...
Whenever there's something downtown, and that would be the only time.
Those routes would run their current route system. It would, you know, run their lines and everything, so all over town, they would pick people up and they could, you know, ride the bus wherever during those hours. It wouldn't just be specifically one way down here and back. It would be...
But it couldn't replace the park and ride service that we're offering.
Because the CVB is funded with hot funds, hot funds cannot be spent on extending the routes of the transit system for an event.
Right, on public transit.
Right.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
If, I mean, if council wishes to do an extended service through the transit system for events that are being held downtown, we would contract with them to do that, and this would, you know, we would have the fee to pay for that.
There's a lot of problems with that. I mean, you're talking about which events, and then some events are for profit. We don't need, I wouldn't want the city to pay the transit company to extend to that. I would, I think the best solution is the private solution, like we did with Boot Fest. There's a lot of complications, you know, and I'm not an expert on the transportation system, but a lot of laws and whatnot and restrictions on how that's used and all that, too. That's why it's probably easier for someone like the limo service, I don't know the name of that company, but they're probably more flexible. I don't know.
Well, it may not be something that we could look at right now, but maybe in the future, other towns have it. I mean, I was in Houston this weekend for the TMO conference, and, you know, Green Line is free, and there's a lot of other, you know, we're talking about the future, we're not talking about right now.
Well, perhaps if we have come back with the numbers for what we paid for the private service, that might be of value to show the difference between that, and I'm assuming it would be lower, I don't know, so...
That, that limo service we used was running a very short route, just from Riverside to the Health Department, back down, and that looped that way. I meant, to use the transit system, they have to run their normal routes. It would not be just a very short route, so... And that you also have to, the paratransit has to run at the same time, too. It can't, we can't pick and choose, so...
Really nice compliment on that transit service from the lady who went to the Health Department. She said they gave her a bottle of water when she got on, it was running, the AC was running, it was cool in there. She waited like two minutes, and they took her. And then so, you know, I would, I don't, the transit service probably would have to do a PO and thirty pages of paperwork to go buy a case of water, so, I mean, there's a big difference.
Long term, though, it, really, the question, the answer, the question might be, is, are the hours good for the transit system, not just for a special event, but are we serving the needs to get people to work? And that's the purpose, is to transport people to jobs. So at some point, Lisa may need to relook and say, okay, are those hours working, you know? And that might be, you know, not just for a special event, because they can't just run a service for a special event, so that might be the question. And Jared's going to come back in a little bit and talk about a comp plan, and, you know, as we look at some of those different elements, transportation is one of the elements in the comp plan, and so it might be a good time to look at transportation, so, anyway.
So she'll come, you'll ask her to come report?
Oh, sure, we'll have her back on the twenty-first.
Perhaps that question can be asked of her, and then Mr. Bucknights as well, so, okay. All right, any other discussion on D2, counsel?
Only other question, same thing I had last year, is the percentage of what we're kicking in the same as it was last year or different?
Talking about of their overall budget, if anything, it's probably slightly less if they got an additional increase from the state or federal, but my understanding is, obviously, our match is flat, so I doubt that percentage has changed much. If anything, it would, might, would have gone down a little bit. We can have that for you next week as well.
Okay, any further comments? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Did you get that?
True. Yeah.
All right, what's...
Item D4 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a community development block grant programmatic agreement with Gulf Ben MHMR of Victoria, Texas regarding public facilities improvement program in the amount of seventy thousand dollars, and declaring an effective date.
Counsel?
Make a motion to approve item D4?
Second.
We have a second? Okay, Mr. Alvarez, discussion.
Question, what's a soft cost?
Soft cost is overhead, it's not, it's not part of the actual construction of the building. From a CBG rule perspective, it's much easier, we're not getting into the...
More like of an engineering type or...
Engineering, architectural fees, people, people cost, not the actual, you know, brick and mortar part of the construction, construction management fee, those kind of things can be covered. Last year's agreement was, this is continuation of last year's agreement. It's actually the third installment in assisting for this facility. The first year did cover a little bit of soft costs, but we covered the acquisition of the land and a little bit of infrastructure related to that, so...
Very important facility.
So they are going to make it larger? This is the one that has for the, what was it? Oh, to house the transitional, long-term mentally disabled limited clientele. Are they going to be living there longer than the other ones or not? Because this is phase three.
This is phase three of the same facility that we've been working towards, so...
Right. What is the difference between the one that we have already and this phase three?
Mr. Polzin is back in the audience, he may help you with this, Jared.
Isn't this, this the same facility?
This is the same facility, that's why I was kind of giving you a confused look. It's not another facility, this is continuing that same facility over there on limits.
So we're just expanding the facility?
Still the same size, we're just continuing to cover some of the soft cost, overhead cost.
Okay, got you. I thought you were going to go build something else.
No, ma'am, same, same facility.
Okay.
And it'll be complete sometime this winter.
Quick, quick question, though. We broke ground about six months ago, I forget now. Any update on how that structure's coming along?
Good afternoon. I'm Don Polzin, I live at two oh three Village Green, I'm the executive director of Gulf Ben Sutter. The project, we actually started in February of this year, and it was two years ago that we came to the council and asked for financial assistance through the public facilities grant, and that allowed us to begin the planning and to engage the architect and the engineer to do all of the necessary preliminary planning. Then we came back to the city for additional funding to fund soft costs that were related to the construction phase, and that was engaging a general contractor, Weaver and Jacobs, to do that. As we got into this, we realized that there were other, as the construction work started, we realized that there were some other soft costs related to the project that would qualify. So we came back to the city when we asked, and you all were gracious enough to consider that, staff, and to bring that as a recommendation to the council. I'm pleased to tell you that the project is, is moving along much quicker than we had anticipated, the weather being the way it's been and principally dry, they've been able to do a lot of the work out there and not be hampered by, by rain. So we're expecting first week of December to be through with construction. It'll be completed. Now, I'm not going to say that the landscaping and everything would be completed at that point, but we're giving ourselves another three months. We're going to be right there in the middle of the holiday season and that kind of thing, that we would hope to be able to open the facility and begin taking residence there in February. So there's a lot of work that we're doing that's even non-related to the construction and the way of developing the policies that are necessary and all of the staffing component and so forth. So once we get that open, though, it's going to be a tremendous asset to this community, and particularly to our healthcare system in Victoria and the region. So we appreciate your wisdom and the investment that the council has seen fit to make to this.
Very good.
Most of it, Mayor, I might say that most of it, and it's really important to say this, I'm, I'm one that's always believed that we need to tap the private sector. We have a great opportunity to do that in our region today with all of the economic wealth that we've experienced, in particular with the oil and gas business and so forth. Most of this project is funded with private money.
Very good.
How are you going to get recipients to know about the services? Are you going to go out and just get referrals? Because I was in Oklahoma City this weekend, and one of the ladies that I was talking to, her job was to get up at four o'clock in the morning and go count homeless people. And, you know, I thought that was amazing, the way she was explaining it, you know, and to be able to gather that information, you know, she was doing it. So I was wondering what, what resources will you be tapping to get recipients to go onto these quarters?
Gulf Ben Center serves four thousand people a year. A lot of these people have unstable housing. We've identified on our caseload alone, over a hundred people that would qualify for this service. We're going to be working very closely with our hospital, the hospitals in the community. We're going to be working very closely with Medco's Family Services and the Homeless Coalition, and people who will reside there, and it'll be transitional housing, it won't be permanent housing. People who will reside there will be enrolled, aligned patients of Gulf Ben Center. They'll have a bona fide mental health diagnosis, and they'll also have co-occurring, which is most of the time, co-occurring primary care conditions, disease, diabetes, respiratory illness, cardiovascular disease, that kind of thing.
Is my memory right, right now, we have to send people out of town if, if there's a need?
Charmel, that's, that's for people that need inpatient care.
Okay.
And the folks that will reside here are stabilized now, at that point. If they needed inpatient care to become stable, they'll have had inpatient care, and now they're in a more stable situation. They can reside there, they won't have any other complicating issues, we're not going to be, I mean, they're going to have very tight admission criteria, we're not going to have folks in there that are actively abusing substance or alcohol or anything like that. So anyway, all those things are important, we've got to have in place. And the inpatient care, though, is a separate, separate issue.
Very good. Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other comments? If not, all those in favor of D4, please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, D4 passes, we'll go to resolutions.
Item E1 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Ken Dig Keys Collaborative for the development of the twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and declaring an effective date.
Should we adopt E1?
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion?
I have a few questions. Okay. Who did the 2025 plan? Did we use these same people or did somebody new?
Well, it's a little more complicated than that, the 20, 20, I did the 2025 plan. The 2020 plan was the predecessor to that, and that was the city's first comprehensive, true comprehensive plan, and we hired a couple of professors from Texas State that helped facilitate that in coordination with staff doing a lot of the work, me and John Kaminsky did a lot of that work in conjunction with those professors. But the 2025 update was simply going in, we left all of the visions and goals and we, intact, and just went in and updated some of the demographics, there was a lot of one-on-one with the council that was in place at that time, and just kind of refreshing the plan. There wasn't a large community-wide visioning process or community engagement process, it was pretty much working with planning commission and really working with council to update the objectives and the plan. So it was a light refresh, rewrite, if you want to say. This, the 2035 plan will be a whole new visioning process, community engagement process, going back out to the community like we did with the original plan, because we didn't have social media like we do now, but we had a steering committee with that that, you know, was very representative of the community. When the plan was in draft, we had it out on the city's website, we went out to every Rotary Lions Club, neighborhood group that would let us talk, and we had a very extensive, at least for that time, community engagement process. So this time around, this will be a complete rewrite, we'll have a very extensive community engagement process where we'll
This company that we are going to hire, Crest Collaborative, who have they done plans for, what are the cities and what population were you talking about?
They're, they're kind of all over the map, and I'll introduce the consultant in just a moment, he may be able to elaborate on that a little bit better. They've done smaller cities in our areas such as Quaro, on up to College Station, Amarillo, I believe, kind of all over the country as well, and they're based out of Sugar Land, so he could rattle off a whole list of other cities than I can for you.
Well, I see that the advisory committee is going to include representatives from the city council, the planning commission, and citizens representing various community interests and stakeholders groups. I would like to volunteer as a city member, a city council member to be on that committee.
We will come back, council will need to appoint that committee, so we will come back at a future meeting for y'all to decide, you know, who's going to be on, who the community representatives are going to be, and what the composition of that committee will look like, so.
And I believe our plan is to come back to you in November and get that established. We envision the first time that that advisory committee would meet would be sometime in January after we get through the holiday period.
Got to get a contract first.
And we've got to get a contract tonight, yes sir.
And the city council as a whole is going to be very actively involved in the whole process too.
Yes, you, you'll have final adoption of it, of the plan.
There'll be joint meetings and meetings with city council throughout the whole process.
There's a lot of work in it, I remember the 2020 plan, I mean, we, I remember being at the mall, passing out those survey cards, I think you were there Jared and John, and we held, I don't know how many hours, I couldn't even guess, were at the meetings and different people.
I think there were at least 22 separate meetings during the, during the adoption when the plan was done. And now we have a lot more tools, we have social media, on TV station, a lot of tools that are at our disposal to really try to engage the community that want to be engaged in it. Mayor, if you'll allow me
Please do.
Just to make another comment, you know, there was an article in the paper that, that alluded to a little bit about the Victoria Alliance effort and some questions, I've had some questions from, from just citizens that know me or remembered the previous process, and just were asking about what's the difference between those two processes. What will be different is that this plan is going to focus on the city, the city functions. It's our master plan, whereas the Victoria Alliance project is much broader in scope, will examine all kinds of issues that the community might be concerned about, from schools, higher education, nonprofits, all of which, or many of which, are outside the realm of core city government responsibilities. To give you example of how this plan will be a little different from the 2020 plan or the 2025 plan, our previous plan sometimes dove into some of those areas. For example, the economic development chapter had a couple of goals to improve the quality of the present and future labor force, and to meet industry's needs for a quality and educated workforce. That's not a, obviously that's not a core city government function, it's very important for the community overall, but that's an example of something that would be a Victoria Alliance effort, and not so much something that would be part of the city's comprehensive plan, so. We are, our efforts will coordinate together, the Victoria Alliance consultant along with ours are working on a, crafting a survey, the Victoria Alliance effort is a little ahead of us, so those two consultants are drafting out a survey, and we'll be able to sort of dovetail and have input into that survey, and the good news is that's going to give us a jumping off point, just because we'll already have an indication of kind of the broader community vision as that survey effort rolls out, I understand sometime here this, in the coming weeks and months. And then from that, we'll be able to, we'll be able to glean a lot of information from that. So we're going to, we're working together, but they are two separate processes, and I know there, you know, might have been a little confusion with our effort, but this is a, this is a master plan for the city, it gives us a roadmap for where we need to direct city services and infrastructure to, you know, direct our growth and whatnot, so. Anyway.
Very good.
If you'll allow me, I don't know if there are any questions?
I have two questions.
Yes, sir.
Your consultants can ask, answer one. I'd like to see a copy of a, of a previous plan that they've, they've completed in another community, if that's available. And then I think also in the language of this contract under the scope, I'd like to more clearly define under Phase One, Recreation and Amenities, Section 19, that we put in the word tourism, so that maybe this can be the, the vehicle that takes the convention center, center discussion and all the other tourism talk out there, and there's, there's a breakout just on that alone. I think you can find some discussion under that Phase One Recreation and Amenities 19, but I'd like to see the word tourism in there if that's possible.
That would be to somewhat address all the earlier speakers, perhaps fold it into that.
Yes, sir.
That's, it's a good idea.
I think we could fold that into, into the plan, and certainly tourism development can be part, can be a component of the overall economic development strategy.
But again, knowing upfront that that, it's not going to create a more, a burden, if you will, or add to a broader work product than what we're seeing right here, I don't know if that's, the consultants I guess can address that.
And I would be willing to bet samples of those plans could be on those websites of some of those communities, perhaps you could email that to all of us, some links, if anyone else is interested and wants to look at Amarillo or, sure, because ours is online, it always has been.
Yes.
And I'm sure theirs are, so maybe that might be a way.
I know, I've looked at College Stations online, so.
Okay, you can do that. If you'll allow me, a couple more, tonight with, as y'all know, we, our previous assistant director for our department went off to the Dallas area, so I've been without one for a little while, but tonight I have Julie Fuljem, she's our new assistant director for the department, she'll be kind of helping project manage this, and I just want to take an opportunity to introduce her, you'll be seeing her face in and around city halls, so.
Very good.
Good evening, I'm very excited to be here.
Well, welcome aboard.
Jared, tell everybody just a little bit about, Julia, you may want to, your background, the two cities you worked for prior to coming to Victoria.
Well, originally I'm actually from the Victoria area, so it's, this is definitely hometown, my parents were both born and raised here, grandparents, so this is what I would consider to be my hometown, even though I've moved around a lot. I began my municipal career with the city of San Angelo as a newbie planner one right out of college, and was there for a short amount of time before I was recruited to the city of Bryan, and that's really where I spent the bulk of my career, I did everything from downtown development to working on the bio corridor initiatives as I was actually leaving. I started as a staff planner, progressed to a senior planner there in Bryan, and then I became the first director of development services for the city of Brenham, that's where I've been for the past two and a half years, and kind of built the department up and just saw the opportunity to come to Victoria, and it's just a really kind of good fit for me and my family coming home.
Good.
So I'm sure she's heard some of the same conversation about downtown development and tourism, visitors in those cities that she was in, so.
Very good, well, welcome aboard.
Thank you, and certainly last but not least, I'd like to introduce Gary Mitchell, he's vice president of Keating Keys Collaborative, and he may be able to help answer some more questions that you may have.
Mayor, I can go ahead and answer some of the questions that have come up.
Please do.
One of those was to mention some other communities, we do work with all sizes of communities, as far as the history and tourism aspect, I'll mention Bastrop, which was about 5,000 population at the time, larger now with Austin's growth, Nakadoches in East Texas, basically all sizes, all areas of Texas, Nakadoches, Huntsville, Orange in East Texas, along the coast, Port Lavaca, South Padre, La Porte, in West Texas, San Angelo, we've crossed paths before, up into the Panhandle, Amarillo, Plainview, places like that, Central Texas, Colleen, Temple, College Station, Bryan. We have a list of 40-plus cities around Texas we've worked with on these types of plans, and we are active across the country, we work across the country as well, just within the last month, I'll toot our own horn, we've won awards in the St. Louis area and in Wyoming, Gillette, Wyoming, which is another energy community, and I would say our sweet spot is in that 50,000 to 75,000 population, and I think we know where Victoria fits in that range, so. So that's some of the other cities we've worked with, as Charmel said, copies of other plans, we'll, we'll send you some links and ways to access some plans online. And finally, absolutely, the comment about tourism, and council member stepped out, but there's reference to recreation and amenities, and what I'll say about that is absolutely we're thinking about visitors, but we're thinking about your residents first. What's appealing to visitors and tourists should be equally appealing to your residents, be useful, beneficial, and in tourism efforts elsewhere, internal marketing, that phrase internal marketing is one of the first steps, is to get your own residents and people in nearby communities to visit their own assets more and keep those dollars here. So that's our approach on that. Council member, I mentioned that absolutely, we can get that tourism reference in there.
Counsel, any questions while we have them here? And, you know, we made you wait this whole meeting, we could have moved that up, this item up, but anyway, because you have to drive back, I'm sure.
And it's a nice drive, and
Yes, sir.
I'll tell you, the couple of things I've heard so far tonight is community spirit, absolutely, interest in planning, dedication to this community, so a lot of good, good signs.
Good.
It was good for Gary to hear that
Yes.
Tonight.
Right, right. Okay, well, thank you for being here.
Mayor, could I reinforce one more point that was mentioned?
Please do.
And that is that the first thing we do is have a workshop, a workshop with council, and with the planning commission involved, we want to know what your priorities are, what you see today and for the future. We come back to you at a midpoint to make sure that the document is going to be on target and to lay out what the content's going to be, so we can then proceed, and at the end, of course, it comes back to you for public hearing and consideration, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to counsel, just to clarify, Mr. Alvarez's comments, everyone understands his intent there, there's no need to
Amend.
amend, so, but everyone understood that, it certainly under the current language can be folded into there, and it'll be reflected, I would say, in the end product, so.
Before I make a change to a contract that's being approved by council, I'm always looking for consensus from council, that, that council as a whole seeks to see that amendment, and looking around the room, I'm seeing a lot of heads nodding, unless I hear an objection, I believe I have that consensus, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on E1? I'll stop and look where we were. If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, E1 passes, thank you.
Item E2 is a resolution approving a change order one to the contract with Tricon Works LLC of Houston, Texas, related to the landfill closure project for the extension of gas wells at the Victoria landfill in the amount of $5,800, bringing the new contract amount to $24,840, authorizing the city manager or designee to execute the change order and declaring an effective date.
Motion to adopt E2?
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? Just to raise it all up higher?
Just the wells, yeah, we, as we, as we're setting the cap on, some of the wells were below the two feet that we needed, plus we had some leach eight riders and some other things that need to be extended out, so that once we put the final cover, the grass, that we still have enough room that we can work on those systems. If we leave them afoot, we're worried about we're going to run over them with a shredder or something like that, and then, you know, looking at a much more expensive repair.
Understood. Okay.
Jared, just refresh me, how many acres are we closing?
We are closing 64 acres. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we're closing 46, I had that backwards.
Okay. Okay, a lot of garbage.
Yes, there is. Since the early 80s.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, passes, thank you.
E3?
E3 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to waive all penalties and interests associated with the 2013 principal amount of ad valorem taxes for property described as 114 Medical Drive for current owner Victoria Texas SNF Realty LLC and declaring an effective date.
Make a motion to approve item E3.
Second.
Any discussion?
How much is it?
That's a great question. The principal amount of the taxes owed to all taxing entities was a little over $38,000. I'm sorry that I don't have the, the amount of interest and penalties that was applied to that.
The reason I ask is that maybe we need to, our portion of it deducted from our contribution to the CAD, just a thought.
Yeah. Everybody makes mistakes, they've got over 50,000 properties to watch, so.
And I, I don't want to speak for the CAD, but I can tell you that the transactional history of Victoria TX SNF Realty, the current owner buying that property, they were buying it from a prior owner who was in bankruptcy at the time, so it was a more complicated transaction than normal. Again, I'm not speaking their defense, but it was a complicated transaction that may have had an impact on this.
I still would like to know what the penalties and interests associated with that.
I will find that out for you.
At one point, please.
Yeah, I think the important thing to note, just in case the public's interested, we are collecting all the taxes, so.
That's correct.
Right, they have paid the taxes.
They have already paid the principal amount of their taxes, that's correct.
Important note. I had the same question earlier.
Yes, indeed.
I asked him too late in the day. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
Item E4 is a resolution declaring the council's support of the city park commission's efforts to create a privately funded dog park within Riverside Park and declaring an effective date.
Make a motion to approve item E4.
Second.
Here, a motion and a second, is there any discussion or questions? Seeing none, I know we'll see this again, I'm sure, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? One, did you get that?
Yeah, I'm opposed.
Okay. E5?
Item E5 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding with Powell Safety Incorporated doing business as Coastal Care EMS of Rockport, Texas, to allow access to the city's radio system and declaring an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there, are there any questions?
Is this just a new EMS system, service that's coming into town?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Okay. What does that bring us to?
This is just the second one, I believe, Tanner, oh, whoever's got the EMS systems, it's just our second one.
Besides the city?
Second or the third?
Besides the city, the city does not do transports, so, medical transports.
I would like to point out though, this, they do pay for that service.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
Item E6 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Union Pacific Railroad for the closure of Staton Street, Guadalupe Street, Sabine Street Railroad crossings in exchange for the consideration of an easement granted by Union Pacific Railroad to the city of Victoria at the Ball Airport Road Extension and declaring an effective date.
Make a motion to approve item E6.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions of Mr. Short? Okay, so this is our agreement with the railroad.
That's correct.
This is in perpetuity?
The, the
It's 20 years from now.
Easement will be, will be one in perpetuity, there is a clause in there that if both of Easement will be a, will be a one in perpetuity, there is a clause in there that if both parties mutually agree to do something different in the future, that they can, but it is in perpetuity.
Both parties have to agree to it.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, that's important, even if it's 20 years, this is related to your subject you brought up earlier about Woodway.
Yes.
So, anyway, I had to get that out there. Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any, those opposed? Okay. E7?
Item E7 is a resolution awarding the 2014-15 Street Sweeping Project to Coastal Maintenance Concepts LLC of Corpus Christi, Texas, for their low bid of $197,265, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents to complete the project and declaring an effective date.
Do we adopt?
Second.
Now, third and fourth, that, so, we have a motion and second, that is, I'm just happy to see this, and I was joking with Charmel, you can go open the door and yell out there, get started, if they're out there waiting to sweep the streets, because this is, and I appreciate you acting so quickly after we got the budget done and getting this contract ready for us, this is important, so, thank you, Mr. City Manager. Is there any questions?
What was the estimate, when we were looking back?
We estimated $200,000 for the sweeping and another $120,000 for debris disposal, so this is within budget and very close, this is 197,265, so very close to that $200,000 estimate. And we did, we did have only one bidder here, I want to mention that was put on Texas Bid System, plans were sent to 13 bidders, five of which opened and viewed those files, only one chose to bid. This bidder is the same contractor that is currently doing the street sweeping for the City of Corpus Christi, his references checked out good, he's within budget, and so our recommendation is that we approve this resolution and award to him.
My only question is, we only going to do 12 times for the state highways and six times for the city arterials or collectors, and only three for the city residential?
Our original thought was we would be able to do monthly on the state highways, so 12 times, like shown here, every two months on the arterials and collectors, six times, which is shown here, and every three months or four times on the residentials. However, after contractors that we talked about came and looked at the condition and how much debris is there, there's a lot of additional passes that are going to have to be paid for, especially with initial cleaning. In order to make that fit within this budget, we dropped down to three residential street cleanings per year, so every four months, to stay within this $200,000 budget.
Do you think maybe in the future we could get?
I was going to say, hopefully, once we get this cleaned up this year and caught up.
Then we will be able to.
We'll be able to increase it.
Yeah, because I was kind of disappointed in three times, because I thought we had looked at something more.
Well, originally, when we started out and we're asking for $600,000, yeah, I think we're going to do residentials monthly.
Well, I think by, every two months, yes, eight weeks.
Bi-monthly, okay, so, when we reduce down that money.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a lot, they're going to have to haul off a lot, so.
It is, and they're going to run, you know, multiple passes, right at first, they'll have two or three sweepers running right together and just one right ahead of the other to get this initial debris picked up.
So when will they start?
Well, we'll have to get, obviously, after this pass tonight, we'll have to get a contract executed, and that will depend on, you know, how fast they can get their insurance and bonding together and that sort of thing, but typically about 45 days to get a contract executed, maybe faster. This is a service contract, so it doesn't carry some of the requirements that a construction contract does, so maybe it's a little quicker. And then we'll have a, we'll issue a notice to proceed right away and have a pre-construction and get them going.
Okay.
So we will fast-track as much as we possibly can.
Appreciate it, and you already have, so.
Sorry. Are they, do you know whether they're going to start with state highways or the residential, or are they going to do some of them?
They're going to come in once a month and do state highways and some arterials and some residential, but they're going to.
Okay, so they may be doing, they're going to be doing all three?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, that's good, at least we'll see a little bit somewheres.
Sure. You're going to see it on those main thoroughfares right away.
Okay.
Very good. Anything else, counsel? We need to vote, right? Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. City Manager reports.
Okay, I've got a couple. The first one is on Riverside Convention Center, we did the structural study, we budgeted for Raleigh McCoy to do conceptual and design for us. Next council meeting, we'll bring back the contract with Raleigh, but kind of wanted to give you an update on that. We're looking at doing an open-air pavilion using the slab, but the contract you'll see in two weeks is going to be phase, so the first phase, Raleigh would do the conceptual, we would stop at that point, bring it back to council and talk through the conceptual to see if y'all are on board with that, and if not, then we'll regroup and have him do some more work, but I wanted to let you know that was coming up, so I know it's been a pressing project for a lot of people sitting up here, so. Any questions about that? The next two items I'm going to do together, and Gilbert's not here, and so Andrew is here to receive these. Again, we're being recognized for the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, it's the 31st year, and basically what that does is indicate that we've gone beyond the minimum requirements of generally accepted accounting practices to prepare our financial reports. And the second award that we're getting is our 29th year, and that's the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for Fiscal Year 1314, and that just recognizes that we are using best practices in doing our budgeting, and that's, again, that's the 29th year, and so Gilbert, I'm sorry Gilbert's not here tonight, Andrew's here, but that team does an incredible job each year on doing our reporting and our budgeting, and it's an honor that we've gotten it this many years in a row, and I think Gilbert's been a part of it 20-something years, so he's been longstanding, so, thank you.
Good job, good job, good government.
They're happy. Thank you, Andrew.
Got running out of wall?
They're starting to buy it now.
Ah, there you go.
Smart.
Oh, okay, so one award, and you just keep getting it updated? Is that how?
Yeah, it looks like they've been right, put almost a dozen years on, actually, there's six down one side, so here is just a little button on there now.
Okay, very good, congratulations. Of course, we already know, good job y'all did, so we, it's very appreciated.
Did a great job. The next report is Councilman Alvarez asked about Juan Lynn, and I also believe Councilman Solis. So Lynn's got a report on Juan Lynn Street.
Certainly, and this is the, what we're talking about here is the section of Juan Lynn that lies between Laurent Street and Port Lavaca Highway. It currently has a street rating of 60, so it is in very poor condition. It is scheduled for complete reconstruction right now in our current CIP in 2018 at an estimated cost of $4 million. We have looked at that street, the city engineer and I, as well as a couple of contractors, our recommendation is that we come in there and do some hot mix level up to improve ride quality there, and then to put, shoot a double seal on that street, just as we have recently in Woodway and Rital Ridge, and then to come back a few weeks later and shoot a fog seal over it, just to give it a final set. The estimated cost, using our current Seal Coat projects, unit prices, the estimated cost to do that work is $118,851.25. The good thing, the good news I have for you tonight is that in our current Seal Coat contract, we have underruns in that contract amounting to $133,010, and so we could easily fit this project right in that current Seal Coat project. We really don't even have to do a change order, we can just use the same unit prices and direct the contractor to move there. What I would need or look for in order to do that is just a consensus of the council tonight, that that is the area where you would like to use those underruns up, and we can direct the contractor to move right over there.
I'd like to move to that.
Your reconstruction is set for when, '18?
'18, and again, the current CIP.
About three and a half, four years? Okay.
Is there anything else in the city that is in more desperate need of that than Juan Lynn?
60 is a very low rating. I won't say there are not some lower, lower rated, but there are very few, if not, and certainly that don't carry the traffic volume that a thoroughfare does. City Manager asked me the same question, is this where I would recommend using that? And I said, absolutely, it's a, it's a great candidate for using that, those underruns up.
Thank you, Mr. Short.
The other thing, I was thinking was, we're running our police vehicles, we're running our fire vehicles as well, and if you've had an opportunity, or not had a police go down that street.
No.
And you will be convinced, Mr. Bachner.
No, I don't, I've been down that street plenty, it's not that, I just want to make sure that there's not something else that we've overlooked or not talked about that needed it also.
Very good.
Do I have a consensus?
No, it sounds like a solution, and I don't see anyone saying no, and it's very fortunate we have that little excess, we can get over there and take care of it.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
And then the last City Manager report is, Mr. Jalapaska had asked for us and has been asking to look at a kayak service in Riverside Park, and we have a private sector opportunity there, so Kobe's going to talk about that contract.
We just recently signed a contract with Jerry's Kayak Services to operate out of Riverside Park, out of the old concession stand facility, and so we do have a signed contract and are ready to go, and he'll begin work on getting that facility ready, and I'm hoping by spring. He's offering kayaks, tube rentals, and bicycles there at Riverside, and he is awaiting outside with kayaks ready to go when we say yes.
He's been working already, he's constantly been.
Yes, he has, so we're excited about that service for Riverside Park.
What are the hours going to be? Do you, do you know yet?
The hours in the contract are given for him to be able to submit hours and with city manager approval, and in that way, if he needs to change them, depending on how the business goes, we really.
Sure, sure.
Tried to be as loose as we needed so that we didn't restrict him on, you know, days that weren't going to be busy or not, so it's really kind of, kind of fluctuate, but we will have a set posted hours, and then if he wants to change those, he would have to give us 30 days' notice to do that.
Did, you said spring?
That's just a target date, that doesn't mean it's exact, but we've got, we've got some remodeling in that concession stand area that he wants to do, and that we've got to get, you know, the water turned back on to it, we've got to get some sinks in there, so, you know, him and I sat down and really looked at during this fall and winter time, trying to get that building up and going, so I don't have an exact target date for you, but that's just kind of what we're looking for.
It's really left up to him, when he, when he gets ready to go with his service, he can, he can start his service.
And that, yeah, I talked to him, and he mentioned the sinks, and I'm just, I told him, if I have to come help you, I'd be glad to, so I'm just excited about it, and I think the public is very excited, so.
This, this is one of the services that people have asked about, yes, we have a paddling trail, can we rent kayaks or canoes? Or do I got to go buy one or borrow one? Well, this would fill a need, it's easily promotable tourism-wise, just because the things are so colorful, but if you came to Victoria and said, oh, you got a paddling trail, no kayak rentals. In the original application, Texas Parks and Wildlife, it, one of the requirements was that we offer kayak rentals or canoe rentals. They waived that because we were a brand-new section, but it was always considered that sooner or later someone would come along and off that service. This is a brand-new market for the man, he doesn't know if he needs to have 20 kayaks around a weekend and zip on Monday, or, you know, he's got to feel the market out, this is a free-market enterprise system, it is not a taxpayer-based system. I believe it's something that we've been asking for and that we've finally gotten, and I'm very pleased about it myself.
Just a quick question, where are they going to park, is he going to have trailers, or you're just going to rent it and walk it to the river?
No, he'll provide shuttle from the general, the concession stand area to the boat ramp and then.
To the launcher.
And then pick up at the pump house.
How will that work as far as advertising? Are they going to advertise on our city website?
Probably not, I don't do, I don't know if it has an amenity, I don't know how private.
Presently, when you hit the rentals for the city website.
Yeah, we will, it's, it's no different than probably having the zoo, who, you know, on our website, it's amenities in the park, so we would, we would list that OC.
Well, I was going to say that we've been chomping at the bit, waiting for this contract to be signed as well, and yeah, it would be advertised a lot on our website, it would be advertised a lot in our brochures, because it's basically another attraction. We envision the CVB buying some passes and be able to, you know, spend two nights and get a free kayak trip down the Guadalupe and support them that way and just get people try and extend their stays.
Fantastic.
Presently, if you go to the city website on the computer, it shows kayak rental, but it's in New Braunfels.
Hmm.
It's linked to one in New Braunfels, which isn't too handy for anyone in the area wanting to use it.
We can fix that right away, I mean.
I'll have to check that, I don't know if that's right. Of course, that's maybe regional tourism, a little too regional, but, but we've been really waiting for Jerry's kayaks to really get in the service, because there is a demand for it, he's already doing pretty brisk business right now with a lot of locals, we'd like to get some of the out-of-town folks involved in that as well.
I get repeated text and Facebook requests, who's that guy that does the kayaks?
Yeah.
He does have a Facebook page, and I always send them to him, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Check that city website, please, and make sure that's directed, so.
I will, I will, I don't recall a link to a, to a New Braunfels kayak, but we'll certainly check that.
Okay. Did you, Mr. Alvarez, have something? Okay, thank you. Very good. Does that conclude our agenda?
We have one executive session item tonight.
Okay.
The city council will recess now for executive session on the 7th day of October 2014 at 7:05 PM. The subject matter of the executive session deliberation is as follows, Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property interest due to the fact that deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the city in negotiations with a third party. Thank you.
All right, we're going to be upstairs.
Yes.